Standing, we will move.
Father in heaven, we come before you always it seems with things that we need or we would ask of you. We never just happily say, thank you for what you have given us. So my prayer is very short. Thank you for the blessings you've given each one of us. Thank you for where we live and our friends and our family. In Jesus's name I pray.
Amen.
I want to deliver this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll do a roll call, please.
Hollers?
Here.
Hosleton?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Neely?
Schwartz?
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Young.
You have item three, adoption of agenda before you don't think an action item. Second, all favor.
Aye.
And opposed to the agenda. All right, miscellaneous agenda items, none. Opportunity for public comment, item five, we've got, it's like seven individuals, so first, Mr. Campeter, identify yourself. Thanks for being here. Now, you'll need to come up, just identify yourself for folks at home. Appreciate you being here.
Good evening, my name is Shane Campeter, the owner of Campeter Remodeling and the current owner of 413, 419 East Capital. I would like to just start out by saying I fully support the MACD's development agreement on 429 and glad to see that the building is being restored back to its sort of charm and looking forward to working with them as well. I would also like to thank several council members, especially council members Jove, Hosleton, Holler, Spencer, and Neely for taking the time this weekend to meet with me and to speak about my concerns over the demo of 401 and the PG and Companies Agreement. I marked out a lot of things because I'm glad to see that the council is reconsidering the proposal and looking at restoration for 401. And I guess I look forward to working with the council and other interested parties to see the development of the block unfold. Thanks for your time.
Thanks. All right, next, Ms. Dietz, Donna Dietz, welcome. Again, if you'd just identify yourself.
It's if you don't know.
Well, we all do, folks at home.
Donna Dietz, I live at 720 East High Street, and like Shane, most of my presentation can be gotten from the way with, but I do want to commend you all for taking the action and accepting the proposal from the Missouri Association of Counties. They deserve to be on this street. They did a wonderful job with the building they had before the tornado, and they really need to be welcomed back to the family, and this is a good and very appropriate way of doing it. And I'm very glad, I've talked to Jeff yesterday morning and Randy and all, and told them what my thoughts were and how we felt about 401 and the whole situation on Capitol Avenue, and I'm very happy that you've been able to go with a different direction, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
I have no comment at this time now.
Okay.
Natasha Sexton?
And again, if you'd just identify yourself. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, I am Natasha Sexton, and I live in the 5th Ward. Thank you, Councilman Schwartz, for, I am one of your constituents, and I reached out to you about 401 East Capital, so I appreciate your re-referral tonight. What you've done is a demonstration of how I think we all expect government to work, so thank you for that. In light of your re-referral, I am adapting my comments a little bit, so I will jump down and simply say that as the city council continues to oversee East Capital Avenue properties that are owned by the city, I ask that you consider establishing a bidding and selection of bids process that is transparent, so that local interests, investors, and contractors may have equal opportunities to contribute to and benefit from the revitalization of this historic area. When local bids or RFPs are not chosen in favor of proposals that are legitimately stronger, then how may feedback be given to local folks so that they may submit stronger and more competitive RFPs in the future? Additionally, I would ask that moving forward, city council consider input from our Historic Preservation Commission as a means of ensuring architectural and stylistic continuity on East Capital Avenue. Ultimately, I believe that we strengthen our community and our economy, our community ties, and community pride when we encourage local participation and establish as much transparency and collaboration as is possible. So I thank you again for the re-referral, and I thank everyone for your time and your consideration and your service.
Thanks for being with us, we appreciate it. Martha Harris, welcome.
Thank you. Martha Harris, I live in the 5th Ward as well. Please recognize that it is the actions of the majority of this council which has prompted this larger gathering of citizens and response. The citizens of this city expect and deserve objectivity, transparency, processes which follow city codes, and respect in all matters that come before this body. Thank you for demonstrating this by re-referring this tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. Mr. Sokoloff, welcome.
How many hamburgers end up frying Saturday night?
Hundred and sixty.
I ate one of them. It was very good.
I had two.
Councilmember, my name, and my name's Steve Sokoloff, I think most of you have seen, have been here before, live in the 5th Ward. I just wanted to express my appreciation at this point for the council's determination to re-refer the matter to undertake a restoration of 401 East Capital supposed to demolition of it. I would also hope that moving forward, that in the future, that stronger consideration would be given to maintenance of architectural significance and consistency in a district like that. I'm hopeful that the Gregorys will be able to find the proper location for theirs, and that they might consider maybe looking at the architectural consistency in the design of their structure as it relates to the rest of the neighborhood. I do want to appreciate the council's determination to reconsider the matter. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
One last thing, and I think it may have already been discussed, couldn't hear it from back there, but because the council may go into closed session to conduct this business, does not mean that they are required to. Just thought of mine.
Your attorney?
Why is that? Mr. Viley, I think.
There he is. Identify yourself.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. My name is Steve Viley. I have a business on East Capital Avenue, 512 East Capital, Community Incorporated. It's a business that I started here 45 years ago, and we've been in that particular location for over 40 years. So we've been watching through the years as first demolition by neglect was taking place, and then of course Mother Nature came along with a tornado that didn't do us any favors. But you guys, I'm really pleased to hear the discussion that came about before the meeting started, and to hear that you're listening to your constituents. I think that's great. I was going to come here and say all kinds of negative things, I think other people were, and now we can't do that. So, but we really do appreciate the fact that you're listening. Really do support what the Missouri Association of Counties is proposing, 429 East Capital. That's going to be a fabulous thing for East Capital Avenue. They used to be our next door neighbors before the tornado, but now they're going to be across the street. Really like to, I think it's great what they're doing, what they're proposing, that you're supporting. And I'm very pleased to hear that 401 East Capital will not be demolished. I think that's, you know, that's been there for over 100 years, it's been a great part of the community, and used to be a beautiful building, and I'm sure that it will be again. So thank you very much for listening, your constituents, and appreciate all the work you do.
Thanks, thanks for being here. That's the last of the names we had on there. We appreciate everybody that has shown up, but if you're ready to move on with the agenda, then again, thanks for your comments. What we're carrying is item six, we don't have any. Takes us to item seven, appointments by the mayor. You have seven names in front of you. Need action on those.
Need to approve.
Got a motion from Councilman?
Spencer.
Spencer and Councilman Holler. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you. We have one of our appointees, Councilman?
Mayor, if I could.
Like him? He's at the door.
Yeah, I was, it was directed, actually, it was great to see you, City Councilman Guesley. Couldn't have done without the legs tonight, but it's great to see you.
I can vouch for, he was helping one of our local hospitals, give him a pass today. He was at a golf tournament. All right, item eight, presentations from staff consultants, none, announcements by mayor, council and staff. Takes us to Councilman Holler's administration committee.
We have a administration meeting October 2nd, 7:30 a.m., across the hall.
Anything you need to update, Councilman, Warton Finance?
Meeting Thursday, 7:30, across the hall. Just an announcement on budget. I think we had two amendments turned in. We will meet Thursday evening. It's my intention to bring those up for discussion and vote on them, and no further action required. My hope is to vote out the budget and move forward.
All right, safety, no more elections.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting will be the 26th of this month at 4:00 p.m. over at the police training room.
All right, and then Councilman Spencer, Public Works?
Yeah, our next meeting will be October 10th at 7:30 here in the council chambers.
Councilman Hosleton, you want to talk about planning and zoning meeting last Thursday?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So at our last planning and zoning meeting, we covered two cases. One was concerning 3219 Masonic Court. That'll be coming back to the council in a couple, first meeting October, for being read and reviewed. It will likely come, well, it will come with a negative recommendation. The developer said that, not the developer, but the property owner said that he will be coming with more details as to mitigation for those issues that the public had concerns about. It was a long meeting, about two and a half hours, Mr. Mayor. And also, we reviewed the seven amendments to our codes, and those will be coming before the council, like we do next meeting as well, right? And our next meeting will be October 10th. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next, planning and zoning.
Yes, sir.
All right, you said three things I was gonna.
Yeah, I just had a quick announcement. Last week, the governor, or Governor Parsons, signed a proclamation for water and wastewater professionals to acknowledge them, and so I just wanted to take a moment to, while our water is privatized here in Jefferson City, our wastewater employees or city employees acknowledge them and their work they do, and maybe not what the community thinks is the most desirable work, and certainly necessary work, and acknowledge their service to the city. So, thank you.
Thanks. I was just gonna announce on, or talk about three things real quick. Hopefully everybody had a chance, Saturday or Sunday, to get out to our airshow. We had an amazing airshow out at the airport, great crowds both days, great weather, great time had by all, some amazing airplanes out there, so I hope you got out and had a good time. I saw a number of folks out there. Second was the LU Lincoln Tailgate, we talked a little bit about it. I think I saw Councilman Hosleton there, and Councilwoman Jove. If I missed anyone else, then we had a great time at Tailgate and football game. And then yesterday, I had the privilege of going out to the Central Missouri Mustang and Ford Club and got to select mayor's choice. Selected a, I think it was a late 60s Ford Falcon convertible. My uncle had one like this, so I had kind of an affinity to it. But it was a great day, they had a nice crowd out there, and the city, I mean, I'm always amazed people say there's nothing to do here, you know, multiple activities going on, and rushed from the airshow to get out there to do, do our activities. So, thanks to everybody that participated. Consent agenda, again, we'll need action on that. Motion to approve, got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right, item 11A, bills introduced 2024-037.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Williams Keepers, Bell House, fee for audit services.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Mayor, during the current fiscal year, the city was contacted by the company that performs audit services with a request to terminate the contract. So the city went out for RFPs to get audit services re-established. We had two offers that were made. Staff is recommending that Williams Keepers receive the authority, the council has this for a three-year period that covers fiscal year '24 to fiscal years '26. Again, two firms provided information. It was published in the News Tribune and posted on the website, and we did have a review committee that determined, based on the specific criteria, awarded points available. One thing to point out with Williams Keepers and the price quotes that have come in, the prior audit services did not include preparation of the financial report. That financial report has always been prepared by city staff, and it is a big undertaking that requires many, many hours. The quote from Williams Keepers does include financial statement preparation, so it is easier for them to prepare financial statements as they perform the audit, and so that is what we have chosen to go with. The other firm was given the opportunity to provide information in the same manner with the financial statement preparation, and cost there was slightly higher when you look at the first year performing those without GFOA submission, and then second and third year with GFOA submission. So again, staff is recommending Williams Keepers for that.
Escaped through the admin committee for discussion and all that, and there are, this is a common thing, most communities probably don't do their own of this. It's the auditing company usually prepares this, and it was recommended and passed through the administration maybe to support this.
All right. Okay, no other comments, 2024-038.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Bartlet and West in the amount of $940,500 for the design of the High Street Viaduct.
Mr. Rush? Thank you. I indicated a contract with Bartlet and West, a local engineering firm here in town, to get plans on the High Street Viaduct to approximately 90% and help us start obtaining some of the necessary permits for that work. And we'll continue to apply for grants for this. We did not receive the latest grant this year that we applied for, but we're hoping to get a debrief and modify the plans as necessary to score.
Just to remind folks, we were able to move some ARPA funds over to help pre-fund this project, so we are ahead of the game. It's nice to be ready when staff does find on those dollars, so thanks very much. Councilman Neely?
Just had a quick question. What was the, who was the grant to, and could you just give us maybe a brief description of why we didn't receive it?
Well, we haven't, we haven't got the debrief yet, and so they ranked them, this is a national pool of money, and the granting agency, I think, is Rachel here, she submitted the paperwork.
So, bridge investment program.
Bridge investment program, I couldn't remember the name of it, but the, we're hoping for the debrief, they ranked them, size of project, et cetera, low, medium, and high, and then there's still a process, so we were, didn't make the cutoff, so. Is that, is that an answer to your question?
So you haven't received back yet, any sort of?
Sealed any official feedback yet?
All right, 2024-039.
An ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Jefferson by amending the hours of operation for marijuana dispensaries.
Mr. Wall?
Thank you. This bill would amend the city code to change the allowable hours of operation from seven o'clock closing to a ten o'clock closing. Wouldn't touch the opening hours at 6:00 a.m. Be happy to answer any questions. I will note that city staff, which Mr. Donaldson forwarded to the council, receives correspondence from one of the licensees here in town, asking that the council suspend the rules and make a decision on this tonight. It's one of the ones that is currently in the process of opening. I think it's fair to say that they're looking for some certainty as they're preparing for their future opening, which is, from my understanding, pretty soon. So, but that's a request made by, by one of the licensees, but happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Holler?
Mr. Mayor, this was discussed through the administration meeting too, to kind of coincide and get everything on the same time zone or the same timelines as what is the statutes are and all that. And after discussion, it went through the administration committee meeting for approval to that, and it is my purview to, I would love to put the check mark by it until we can move to adoption, so this gentleman and maybe the other ones that are here in town are not conflicted with state versus city.
I'd like to second that. Are there any objections to suspending the rules? Hearing none, we're gonna ask the clerk to read the word once again.
An ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Jefferson by amending the hours of operation of marijuana dispensaries.
Now, 2024-39 on the table in front of you. Any other discussion? Roll call that then.
Hollers?
Aye.
Hosleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Bill passes.
All right, takes us to 2024-040.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city, excuse me, city clerk to execute a $387,048 agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Metropolitan Transportation Planning Services for the period of November 1, 2024 to October 31, 2025, reflecting consolidated planning grant funds as approved in the Campo FY 2025 Unified Planning Board.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, clerk of grabs, this is an agreement that authorize the consolidated plan grant, CPG, the city asks with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. We do this on a yearly basis. This funds our long-range transportation planning that is administered through our local NPO, which is our capital area metropolitan planning organization. These funds are generally an 80%, 20% local match. I think the current budget this year is included within this document. As you can see, this year, there's a little bit discrepancy there with additional projects, the tri-level plan that we've had in there. But with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, saying none. 2024-041.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a real estate and development agreement with the Missouri Association of Counties.
I would like to suspend the rules in order to get this passed, get shows in the ground, and get, any opposition on 2024-041. All right, I'm gonna ask the clerk to read it again, and then Mr. Smith will give you a comment.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a real estate and development agreement with the Missouri Association of Counties.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a short PowerPoint, just going over some of the highlights of this proposal. I think as a lot of the comments have suggested tonight, I think there's a lot of excitement around this property, but I'll kind of give some of the highlights and some of the background here. Of course, the city had put out an RFP for the hopeful redevelopment of properties located along East Capital. It's a property the city recently acquired after years of neglect and nuisance issues. The hope being that properties could be put back into the hands of individuals who would rebuild, rehabilitate, and put the properties back to use. The city council formed a scoring group for this RFP. They did review a number of proposals for some of these sites. Ultimately, they did select the Missouri Association of Counties to award certain properties, that'd be 429 East Capital, 114 and 115 Jackson, and 14, excuse me, 417 Parsons Way. Just a few highlights of that proposal. And one I'll note here in a minute, that if you're reading through the proposal, it's actually a little bit different than the original request. During the review of that project, the scoring committee did identify 115 Jackson as a potential location for parking, which the Missouri Association of Counties had identified two other properties in the original proposal. So, they requested staff to speak with Missouri Association of Counties about using that property for parking, and they did accept that. So, I'll show you a little graphic here in a second to kind of show what the original proposal was and what's essentially being approved tonight within the agreement. The proposal is to remodel a portion of the existing building of the funeral home on 429 East Capital. It would preserve the older portions of that building. It does call for the demolition of two portions of the rear of the property, which were added on much later, I think 1960 and 1970. The remodeling would include office spaces, meeting hall space for, for their local headquarters. As I mentioned before tonight, they were also located, just I think, down the block on East Capital Avenue. So it would be kind of a return to the location for that organization. The proposal does also include an additional building for trainings on 114 Jackson. The price for these four properties would be $99,900. Estimations within the agreement would call for the project to be completed within 36 months. And just kind of a review of the original proposal, they did identify 104 and 108 Jackson as part of that original proposal. And as you can see, the 115 now becomes part of that proposal that was included in the agreement. So those four properties, excluding 104 and 108, would be part of that agreement. And what that does, and what they identified at that time, is it opens up 104 and 108 for additional development as well. So I think it's a good kind of change and revision to that, to that proposal and agreement, kind of using that 115 in a way that is currently being used, which is a parking lot as well. A couple of the renderings that were included in the package submitted by the Missouri Association of Counties shows some, conceptually, what they vision as part of the interior of that, and also hopefully a look at what that property could become in the future. So with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I think they do have some representatives here tonight, if you'd like to hear from them directly.
Thanks. Mr. Hobbs, any, any comments you'd like to make? If you just identify yourself, thanks for being here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, city administrator Crane. On behalf of the Missouri Association of Counties, my name is Steve Hobbs, and I'm the executive director, and have been since September of 2021. I have two members of my staff with me here tonight, David Owen, who's my deputy director, and Cindy Wells, who's been our CFO for 30 years. Pretty close. Both. Uh, both residents of the city of Jefferson. Uh, this project probably started for me on May the twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, when I got a phone call from my good friend Dick Burke, who was the executive director of the Association of Counties at that time, and said, "Our home is gone." That was the morning after the tornado hit. And while we worked, uh, I was on the board of directors at the time, Missouri Association of Counties, and while we tried very hard to save that building, there was just no way we were gonna able to be able to put it back together again. And Cindy told me one day, she said, uh, "I thought when we bought our building on sixteen forty-eight East Hill, we'd gone there to die." That's how much that historic building and being part of that community meant to our organization. Fast forward till this spring, when I met with the mayor for just a few minutes at the Capitol and said, "Hey, we want to build back on five sixteen and five fourteen, and we've got an architect working on it, but we need parking." And we talked about some of the different things that were going on. He said, "You know what? We've got some projects that are going to be available, you might want to look at." So we talked to our architect. She went and looked at some of the properties, and she said, "You know what? Four twenty-nine would be a fit." I told some of my staff that, and two of them promptly said they would quit, they'd never work in a funeral. Uh, but they changed their minds since then. Our membership got behind it, quickly saw the potential that was there for our organization and to retake our spot back on historic East Capitol Avenue. You've got to remember, my board of directors have approved this without ever setting foot in that building. They understand what this potential is, and we're truly excited. Uh, Mr. City Administrator, I want to thank your staff. They've been fabulous to work through us through this whole process. We are beyond excited about the opportunity this is going to afford us, and we pledge to you as a city council, that we'll be a great partner, once again, on East Capitol Avenue for the city of Jefferson. Happy to take any questions.
Any question? Councilman Schwartz?
I don't, I don't have any questions for Mr. Hobbs, but... So there's been a lot of accusations thrown at us about four oh one, about because David Gregory was a former house member, and whether we're selling out to one of our pals in the Capitol. Well, most of you probably don't know, maybe some of you do, Mr. Hobbs is a former house member. And you know what? I think what that represents is I think we all try our hardest to make the best decisions we can for this community. It has no, has nothing to do with who they are, where they were. So we have two former house members that have submitted proposals, one of which I think will be unanimously passed tonight. I want to thank you. I think this is awesome. Uh, I'm a friend of yours. We've known each other forever.
Long time.
I miss my buddy Ronnie.
I do, too.
And, uh, I just want to say to the folks listening that, you know, it's not about that. It's about trying to do the right thing, and sometimes we get it wrong.
You know what? I think there's, there is a thing that you all need to understand, is that I live at Mexico, Missouri. I'm a farmer. I travel back and forth through Jefferson City every day to work. But when you come down here as a member of the general assembly, you quickly learn to love this community. And I haven't forgotten this community and how warm and welcoming they were to me. And one of the things I'd really like to impress upon you all is tonight, is that the actions that this council take matter for those organizations that come here to work with the state government that's here, and you're so fortunate to have, I know it's a pain, we're a pain, or we were a pain. But the potential you have for the new convention center and the parking facilities there, without this, we probably wouldn't be considering this project. Our members want to be here in the state Capitol, and those, we have lost so many conferences that used to come here from our members. They're going to other places now. They want to be back here in the Capitol city. You guys can help make that happen.
Councilman Mallor?
Mr. Hobbs, thank you again for your proposal and, and, and the concept and the vision for that area and to the members who blindly, like you said, said yes, and without knowing it. And I said, I think that says a lot about you, uh, and, and the people with you. There has been some things brought up about some old antique stuff inside, uh, that have some significance. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
Yes, I am.
Is that, uh, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but that, that could be worked out if, if there are people interested in those. Could they meet with you about that? I'm not sure how this contract works, if, if that's doable for you, but would you?
We'd be happy to visit with anybody.
Visit with anybody.
But here's what I'm telling you right now. It's our plan to repurpose as much of the interior furnishings to reuse into our office building as we possibly can. So we want the building to remain historical, not only on the outside, but on the inside as well. You have to remember, I have almost fifteen hundred elected officials. Almost every one of them works in a historic courthouse. They understand the history and they embrace it. So that's our plan. Absolutely, we won't talk with anybody and, and are willing to work with you. We're going to be, uh, part of the historic East Capitol tour on the twenty-ninth, and we're excited about that. So, uh, we can't wait to get started on this project.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Neely?
Thank you. Mr. Hobbs, thank you, and I appreciate the association. There's a lot of opportunity on East Capitol Avenue, and there's been a lot of folks before now developing Capitol Avenue to make that opportunity, and that continues, and we're so happy to have you. I envision a neighborhood where folks walk, where we have plaques that explain these homes to kids, to tourists, whoever's coming down the street. Explain Jeffords and city's history, embrace it. So thanks again.
You know, I think what's so cool about that neighborhood is because of the work the city did, making it more pedestrian friendly, uh, with that location right there, we're four blocks from the state Capitol, we're three blocks from downtown on High Street, will be two blocks from the new hotel, Conference Center. That really played a big part in us wanting to get back on the East Capitol Avenue.
I'm glad our brief conversation on the fourth floor of the Capitol has turned into an exciting project. I remember walking down Capitol Avenue the morning after the tornado and seeing the side blown out of Mr. Violet's building, seeing your building, Dick Burke is a...
Yeah, it fell on Bell's office.
Dick Burke is a, a good friend of mine, and, yeah, I talked to him that day, and I mean, he was shattered. I mean, just...
Yes.
I mean, everything that they had worked for. Chief, wasn't chief at that time, but he gave me a tour of the city and kind of shown, showed me damage all around our city. So it's exciting to see someone that lost something that day to come. Hopefully, council still gets to, hopefully gets to come back and rebuild an exciting project. If you're good, I think we're gonna go to...
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. So you know the comments, we'll do a roll call vote.
Hoggleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Hallers?
Aye.
Bill passes.
Thank you. Thanks. Welcome. We're gonna be watching. We're gonna be watching. All right. That takes us to twenty twenty-four dash zero four two.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a real estate and development agreement with four oh one East Capitol Avenue LLC, four oh five East Capitol Avenue LLC, and one thirteen Adam Street LLC.
Councilman Schwartz?
Uh, yeah, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to recommit this to the council. While knowing that, uh, closed session is not required, I believe that when negotiating contracts with multiple different developers, that it's best done in private with the, um, what we come out of the committee with to be discussed in public and voted on. So my motion is to recommit this to a closed session for the city council to change directions from demolition to restoration of four oh one, uh, with further discussions to be had.
You're making a referral motion back to?
I'm gonna re-refer this back to the, I don't know what to call it, the city council closed session.
We've got a second from Councilman Spencer. Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to make a few comments. First off, I, I appreciate Councilman Schwartz as the bill sponsor to, to pull this so that, uh, we can, I think, have, um, sort of discussions about, uh, projects. You know, it, it was kind of presented to us and, and presented back to the public as either or some game of either demolition or rehab. And I have a comment that Mr. Gregory wanted to share, uh, tonight, because he couldn't be here, but, um, there's a lot of comments made that, uh, you know, even out of town or, um, give preference to, to local contractors, and I'm, I'm all about having a level playing field by all means, but Mr. Gregory's gonna pump in two to two and a half million dollars of outside dollars into this community, which means we're not chasing the same dollars all the time. And I think it's important that we have an influx and infusion of outside investors. And I'm very encouraged by the actions tonight that we can continue down that, down that road. Uh, Mr. Gregory just wanted him, his comments to be made public to say, uh, thank you to the incredible amount of support that have encouraged, the supporters that have encouraged this project. I've had great conversations with several folks about ways I can improve my proposal. I want to thank Councilman Spencer and his leadership for bringing these thoughts to my attention. So with that, I, I urge our council to be, uh, ready to work and push, uh, these proposals forward to make our East Capitol Avenue beautiful.
So Councilman Lester, then Councilwoman Joe?
I don't think I need to make an amendment, but I think we, I wanna try to get out before you an understanding that when we have this meeting, that we have the developers come and present so that we're, we have that opportunity to ask some questions, express any concerns, and, and get those, uh, the, the response from the developers. So I'm just...
I agree.
I agree.
Uh, I believe we can do that without modifying, so that will be staff's listing.
I think if we'd done, done that process, which I think is the appropriate process, we, we may not have been able to move this quicker. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Joe?
Thank you. Uh, my question is for council. The recommendation to do it enclosed, um, can you provide us with some more specifics on what the risk would be having it ver, open versus closed and why we're having that recommendation?
So generally, when you're doing a closed session, um, on bids, it's out of fairness to those people that are competing. Um, so that way, essentially, the person who goes last doesn't have the advantage of hearing what the first two people say and being able to, you know, criticize, respond, make their proposal better based on what someone else, uh, presented to the city council. So, so the consideration is, is largely toward fairness to people that are participating in a competitive process.
In that competitive process, the presenters would present one at a time, not in front of one another?
Correct.
Councilman Hoggleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at what point would, um, they would have to base, all three presenters would have to waive their, um, they could agree to an open session if they wanted to, but this process is more...
In theory, yeah.
Sorry?
In theory, yeah.
Okay. I just wondered, because I've never seen that, I've never seen that work before, so I just wondered what the mechanics were behind that. And also, I forgot what I was gonna say. The mechanics of, of how this decision was arrived to was in a vacuum. We needed more time, we needed, and the amount of time that we had to deliberate this was insufficient for the amount of material that we were covering. And I, I want to seek for mechanisms in the future to prevent us ever from just leaving something hanging or trying to rush the people's business. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Neely?
Uh, this may be a question, question for Councilman Schwartz, but with, in our first closed session, we had two members of our Historic Preservation Commission with this, and the, the, I guess the, the wish was to have them review the whole thing, uh, have the experts in the room, that type of thing. Came to, uh, came to two members of the commission coming. So would we still include them as part of this meeting?
I think that's intent.
The intent, okay.
All right. Seeing no...
Mr. Mayor, just...
Mr. Spencer?
All right, just to make sure, I mean, I made that point, um, in the pre-meeting, but we are not starting from scratch on, on this RFP process. I want the people to understand that we are not going to drag this out any, any longer than necessary. So again, I, I hope that we, as a council, can get our schedule and our calendars worked, that we can get a meeting scheduled, scheduled, just dealt with, so.
All right. You have a motion for referral back to council in closed session. We're gonna do a roll call vote.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Hallers?
Aye.
Hoggleton?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Takes us to item twelve A, bills pending twenty twenty-four dash zero.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the wastewater enterprise fund.
Rush?
Thank you. Uh, as clerk indicated, this is supplemental on the wastewater fund, so, uh, uh, what had happened is, uh, we received our first drawdown from the state revolving loan fund, and, uh, so to get that money back in the budget so we can start other projects takes a supplemental, so that's, that's why we're back here, uh, with this. Uh, the, uh, there was a list of projects, uh, that we talked about with Public Works and Planning Committee in the last couple of months, uh, to, to spend this, these funds on. They include, uh, some replacements of an Algoa Pipe Bridge, uh, work on Franklin Street where the trash truck caved in with some sewer upgrades there, as well as stormwater, some additional curting place, pipe linings, uh, uh, working with the school district over on Jackson Street in conjunction with one of their projects to include some, some additions there. Uh, another, uh, Westview Heights or Westview, uh, Phase One project, and some erosion control on Grace Creek. If you have any questions.
So now we'll do a roll call vote.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Hallers?
Aye.
Hoggleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bill passes.
Twenty twenty-four dash zero three one.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city for the period of November one, twenty twenty-four to October thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, and appropriating money in the city treasuries paying the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Councilman Schwartz?
I just want to go ahead and put this on the informal calendar.
All right. So twenty twenty-four dash zero three one will be put on the, and you did mention there's a budget committee meeting Thursday night.
Thirty-nine, five thirty.
And everybody should have gotten some emails from Mr. Barry, who has been coordinating and sending to everybody, so should have, if you want. Thank you. Twenty twenty-four dash zero three two.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter eight, building and building regulations of the code of the city of Jefferson pertaining to abandoned buildings.
Mr. Smith, you've been busy.
All right, well, I'll, I'll just keep going. So we have a bill, um, that would amend chapter eight to include, um, partial within Eight to include a hurdle within our abandoned buildings program. We covered this a couple weeks ago, but just to kind of recap, so the city currently has a residential abandoned building program. The reason communities have abandoned building programs, it recognizes that when a building becomes abandoned by the property owner, it sometimes can lead to negative outcomes for that neighborhood and can cost the city an undue burden as far as the amount of resources necessary to monitor that for nuisances. So it really requires property owners to register those properties so that we can essentially monitor those. And it does come along with administration fees that reflect the additional resources the city's putting into that. So the suggestion was to add commercial to the residential portion in recognition that commercial buildings have some of the same impacts the residential properties do as well. Go through some of the key changes here. Really, the key is the addition of that commercial, but we did add a couple components of that. Within the ordinance, you have to meet two specific conditions to be considered abandoned. I think after some discussions and looking at some other communities, we wanted to add one condition to that. And I don't want to call it a catch-all, but I'd like to say that a lot of those conditions that we have are very specific. This one is a little more of a recognition that sometimes it's not one specific real clear attribute that makes something abandoned. It can be a culmination of lots of maybe softer circumstances. So this kind of allows us to look at a wider range of things to meet one of those conditions. Still have to have one of the other conditions that would be considered abandoned, but it kind of adds, I think, a little bit of additional tools to our toolbox when we're reviewing those properties. Added definition for commercial and separated that from residential. One of the things that we discussed quite a bit was the fees for this. So the fees for residential properties is set by state statute. So that is $200. Commercial is not in review of other communities and also kind of review of our team's expended resources when potentially looking at these commercial buildings. Our estimate here would be somewhere in that range of $1,000 would be an appropriate fee for commercial properties. One thing I did want to point out, we did submit a amendment to this bill. Initially, the text amendment did have the fees in there. If you're not familiar, the city's municipal code has an appendix Y for all fees. Generally, within the text of the code, we just reference appendix Y. So we made that change, so the actual fees are not within the text of that bill now. It refers to appendix Y for the fees, and those fees are added to appendix Y. But it would be $1,000 for the registration for a commercial fee, and then the additional 125 for any types of late penalties for commercial properties as well. We did also add a section, we thought it would be important, to if someone had found themselves within this abandoned building registration list, what steps are and what is necessary to remove yourself. So we do want to encourage people to make the necessary improvements to get off the abandoned building list. So we did want to go ahead and itemize that, looking at some other communities. I felt this would be a helpful addition to ours. With that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that text.
Question to Councilman Spencer?
This is just in reference to the municipal code, appendix Y. How often do we review our fine structure? Is that a yearly?
Annual.
Annual exercise?
Appendix Y is a fee structure. You said fine structure.
I'm sorry, I.
Make sure we answer the correct.
Good. Thank you.
Councilman Aller?
I want to thank the staff, Clint and everyone that involved with that, but also want to thank Councilman Lester and Councilman Mealy. We had met some months ago talking about issues of First and Second Ward since we're neighbors and all that, and some of the same problems we all solved together as this. And so we sat down, had discussions, and then met with and made proposals to Mr. Smith and all that. So my, all I want to just say is thank you, Mike, for moving this through and moving it through the project, and thanks for erring for me and meeting and trying to come up with something that will help the, I think mostly the First and Second Ward, basically, but I know there's other structures out there that, you know, to the betterment of, we're trying to make Jeff City more presentable and, you know, a better place to live.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Allers is exactly right. You know, this is mostly problematic in the first and second wards in the core of Jefferson City, at least abandoned buildings. And, you know, the idea with these commercial abandoned buildings is these owners who decided to let these buildings deteriorate never really faced any consequence. And, you know, I think it would probably be safe to say that a lot of us feel that there ought to be consequences for bad behavior, and whether or not these fees end up, you know, pushing somebody towards compliance is another thing, but at least now there is a penalty to finger off that. So we appreciate the work of staff and joining together.
Seeing no other comments, we'll do a roll call vote on 2024-032.
I think we need a motion to accept the substitute.
Motion to accept. Motion, second, to accept the substitute. Roll call vote on the substitute.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Substituted, substitute's been accepted.
Now you have substitute 2024-032.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Bill passes as substitute.
All right, takes us to 2024-033.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Prost Builders and a grant agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to construct a new airport control tower for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Marash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is a, basically what we're executing here is the Prost Builders contract, the local builder, to build the airport tower. It's about $7 million project. Construction wise, the total airport tower is closer to $10 million with all the design, property acquisition, construction engineering, et cetera. We do not have the grant agreements in hand yet. Working through the FAA and MoDOT to clear those agreements has taken some time and usually does, but we have their commitment letter in here. So what will happen is this contract will be approved, then we would hold on the actual notice to proceed until everything was finalized. But this is, this project would be matched with 5% from city funds, federal monies, and that will cover the airport allotment of the half cent sales tax. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. This is a long time coming project and pretty exciting.
Councilman Schwartz? Very briefly, Mr. Marash nailed it. It's a long time coming. Well overdue. That was a temporary tower, is my understanding. Mr. Rycheck had a lot to do helping with this, and this is a great deal for the community, and I hope we can improve it. All right, we have 2024-033 in front of you for a roll call vote.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Bill passes.
Thank you. I agree. There's a lot of excitement about our airports. And we've got a lot of hands in this project. I don't know if you've had a chance to see the old tower, but it's needing replaced. So thank you. 2024-034.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the replat of lots one through three in the middle of Ridge subdivision, a subdivision of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this request is for the combination of three lots into one. Essentially, the infrastructure extension there became a little problematic, so the developers looking to basically combine those into one lot and extend it just to that one site. It's pretty straightforward. I'd be happy to answer any questions, though, regarding that replat.
Seeing none, you have 2024-034 in front of you for a roll call vote.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Motion is adopted.
Seeing no other comments, we'll do a roll call vote on 2024-032.
I think we need a motion to accept the substitute.
Motion to accept. Second, to accept the substitute. Roll call vote on the substitute.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Bill passes.
2024-036.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with Farr J C Holdings LLC.
Marash?
I think I can do it, or the city councilor did it last time, talked about it.
Happy, happy to help out. So this bill would approve a development agreement with J C Farr Holdings LLC. Essentially, the agreement requires that the developer build four residential units on land that has a Wildwood Extension project, which matches discussed contingent on the extension of Wildwood Drive. A large part of the consideration of this development agreement is the ability to city county contractors to enter on to property, to mine out material that will assist, help reduce costs in the construction of Wildwood Extension. So if you have any questions, any project specific questions, can we refer back to Mr. Marash?
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, just for information purposes, I just want to thank city staff, but I also want to thank my colleagues, Derek Spicer and Mayor Fitzwater, who was the councilman at the time. Our first term, we wanted to open up an opportunity for the Wildwood Extension to create future development, and this is the first initial domino to fall. And I appreciate Mr. Farr's investment in our community, and it's been a long time coming, but it's definitely an avenue for expansion and growth in our city. So that's it tonight.
All right, you have 2024-036 in front of you for.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Bill passes.
Nothing currently on informal calendar. Resolutions, item 14A, resolution 2024-20.
A resolution authorizing the city clerk and mayor to enter into a funding agreement with Lincoln University.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. So this resolution would approve an agreement with Lincoln University for the Health Sciences and Crisis Center project back in 2022. The council sets aside $500,000 out of its community projects fund to participate in the funding of this facility for Lincoln University. This is the culmination of that decision. And so approval of this agreement would make the city a funding partner in this project. That this project will serve the educational needs for the city, and there's some pretty critical areas of occupation. So happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Spencer?
Will you approve? Resolution 4-20.
All right, you have resolution 2024-2024-20. Seeing no other questions, we'll do, no other comments, we'll do a roll call.
Allers?
Aye.
Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Do you believe they're getting close to shovels in the ground on the siding project? Item 14B, 2024-21.
A resolution authorizing a contract with Bartlett West for the River Market and Chestnut Street Design Project.
Mr. Smith, you're back.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You have Public Horse in back, and just in case.
All right. Yeah, I think we do have representative here from Bartlett West as well, might speak on this if he chooses. But just to kind of recap, so the city had put out a request for qualifications for engineering services for the design of the River Market located in MSP. We also included that design of Chestnut Street, that site, and the street would need to be engineered. The RFQs were reviewed, and staff is recommending award of that to Bartlett West. This project and the Chestnut is included within kind of the ongoing MSP project, which part of that budget does include a 2.1 million grant from community revitalization. So it's kind of the ongoing design and culmination of that site as we kind of move forward to some of the deadlines we're looking for next year to get something built. So like I said, I think a representative from Bartlett West is here, if there are any questions. I'd like to hear some information from them, but otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Smith is ready. Mr. Gilbert is here, if there are any questions. This is a culmination of a lot of work over a number of years, but it's fun to see some activities starting to come from fruition from our discussions with the states. We'll need action to get it on the table if there are no questions. Councilman Allers?
I was moved.
Thank you. Ms. Spicer, second. Do a roll call vote.
Housleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Thanks. Great work. 2024-22.
A resolution to authorize the mayor and city clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding for nurse practitioner services with Polk County.
Ms. Perry and Mr. Mollmans, I'll let you wrestle over.
So the county was recently awarded a grant to a nurse practitioner that will operate out of the Polk County Health Department, and they are going to use that nurse practitioner to allow their employees, the employees' families, to come in and utilize the nurse practitioner for a reduced $40 flat fee for the visit. There will be some add-on costs depending on whether or not there are testing supplies that need to be utilized and stuff like that. They have invited the city to participate in this program as well. So this MOU is for participation. We did take this through the admin committee and instructions to participating in the program. However, one of the other things that we did bring up to the admin committee is that administration feels like it would be helpful if in some way we were subsidizing that $40 cost for the employee. Currently, if an employee goes to an urgent care, they do have the ability in some instances on one of our insurance programs to pay a fee that's lesser than the $40. We feel like by incentivizing up to $20 of that visit, we would be helping the employee with cost. There would also be a time savings because right now it's become very difficult to make appointments and get in to see your physicians. So because it's just the county and city employees and families that would be handled by this nurse practitioner, we think there's going to be some time savings there for staff. On the flip side of that, for the self-funded health insurance program, they would bill essentially for the services rendered at that $40 rate that would be paid by. essentially for the services rendered at that $40 rate that would be paid by the city, the employee, whatever the case may be, but they would not then bill health insurance for any other costs. So right now, if an employee goes to urgent care, they pay their co-pay and then any additional services are billed to our self-funded health insurance and, and that self-funded program is on the hook for the remainder of the cost. In this situation, it would be a $40 fee and there would be no additional billing to the self-funded health insurance. So we do believe that there would be a savings there that could be fairly significant depending on which facility someone would typically go to or the services rendered. It could be as much as $100 to $300 per visit that the self-funded health insurance program would be responsible for. So this MOU is for the service. It is not for any kind of subsidy, but there was some discussion in the admin on that subsidy that we wanted to bring forth as well.
Yeah, so just to add to that, the, the resolution is broken into two sections. So the first section is authorizing the execution of the nurse practitioner services with Polk County. Section two provides authority to the city administration to develop and implement a program in which the city's health, self-funded health insurance fund would partially subsidize up to one half of the cost of an office visit. So this is laid forth in two separate sections in the resolution.
Come as no surprise to anyone around this table, we've been struggling with our health insurance. Appreciate the work staff has done to look at this proposal. We will need action to get it on the table and then I'll entertain if there are any other questions. Councilman Allers?
Before I offer a motion on that, Mr. Mayor, I've, so we had a good discussion about that and I think all of us know the 800 pound gorilla in the room is our insurance cost and all that stuff. And this came about by the, the county reaching out to us on a grant that they had received and thought it would be beneficial to the city and the county employees. And so it's kind of an outside the box thinking and, and we do a lot of cooperative projects with the county. And so I, I'm glad they, that they thought of us and, and reached out to us on that. And I believe it's well worth the savings that we, we might incur if they went to the urgent care and the hospitals and all that as far as time saved and the cost to us. So I, after a lot of discussion, it moved from the administration to the city council for, for the discussion on a supportive vote.
Is that the motion?
I would make a motion on the resolution to.
Second.
All right. Councilwoman?
Yes, my second.
Councilwoman, Joe.
Uh, the question I have, and I feel like the answer is yes, but I just want to be certain. Employees utilizing this, their health records would be private from their employer still as it would be if they were going to your standard health facility.
The health department would still have the same HIPAA regulations as every other physician would. The one thing to point out on the subsidy is that they would allow an employee and any of their family members to utilize the service. Whether they are on the city's health insurance or not, they would be able to receive a reduced $40 visit. The only way we are proposing a subsidy is if the individual that uses the services is covered under our health insurance. But in some instances, if the spouse is not covered under our insurance, it would still be a cost savings to them because there's that $40 flat fee visit.
Councilman Michael, then Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, interface, or will the nurse practitioner serve under Cap Regent, St. Mary's, and will that information be uploaded to file whoever they're associated?
I don't think they're associated.
I believe that, that they're serving under the, the auspice of the health, of the health department. These are, these are health department.
Councilman Allers?
Just a question, the nurse practitioner will be located at, at the health department?
Correct.
Ever do clinics here or something, do you know?
With this particular service, I don't think that they would do clinics. You wouldn't, we would call and make an appointment there and just identify ourselves as a city employee. There are some other services that the county can assist us with. For example, we've done flu shot clinics in the past. They would be able to come in potentially and do those clinics for us here as well. And, and we have used the health department for other services. We did during COVID, the health department, we went to the health department as an organization and they did our, our COVID shots for us as well.
Councilman Spencer?
And if something's changed, please correct me, Chief Schofield, but the county health department is a pretty good partner with our fire department as far as immunizations with, with, for our fire, our personnel, so.
We do need immunizations with the COVID, and have requests.
All right, seeing no other comments, you have resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two in front of you for a roll call vote.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Is there, is this two parts? It's in one?
Yeah.
No?
No.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?